On work session five forty seven, January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Uh for tonight's work session, we have a couple of items on the agenda. First item is the annual housing report. So Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Rosen. Our city councilors are joined by our land manager Sean Conrad. So be given a brief with fifteen minutes budgeted for this, so it's pretty quick, but if you guys have questions, happy to get through as many as we can. Um, so we started the annual housing report last year. We did, we did two different reports. Uh, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, so we'll have some of that data available as well. Uh, but this is twenty twenty four, so we're doing a calendar by the calendar year, so January first to December thirty first. Um, and this is related to uh council, council goal for twenty four, twenty five pillar three, livability, workability. And the deliverable is to monitor housing, which is that this housing report. Uh, track progress on issues, actively participate as needed with legislator and rulemaking committees. So we'll give a preview of what happened at the last legislative session, but also what's likely on the agenda for, for this legislative session as well. Um, so Sean's gonna talk about the numbers and then I'll, I'll finish it. So go ahead, Sean.
Uh, yeah, this last calendar year, we had ninety four units permitted, ninety three units constructed. Um, you'll see that we granted no land use approvals, creating new lots. Now, the city did receive two um minor lot partitions. For residential lots to create three lots each. Those are still in the review process. We also did receive one um industrial, two lots uh minor land partition from Sherwood Commerce Phase Three, but that is still in review. Um, and then I, we will get to some of the new state housing legislation that passed in just a minute, so.
Yep. Um, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily a bad thing that we didn't have any land subdivisions uh in twenty twenty four. We'll get into it later in the presentation, but there's still quite a bit of vacant lots on the previously approved subdivisions. So we think the trends are gonna continue, at least for another year, but we're gonna have to do new subdivisions, partitions. To keep the building permits, you know, flowing at, at the rate that they are. Sorry, go, keep going.
Yeah, as you can see on this chart, residential units permitted from two thousand to twenty twenty four, you can see the low in twenty twenty one. But this year, uh, we issued a total of ninety four permits. Vast majority of those are detached, single family homes. Um, we did do ten percent multifamily homes. And those are the nine units, the townhouse units currently being built on Southwest Sherwood Boulevard, so that, that accounts for the multifamily uh permitted for this year.
But overall, I, you know, good that we're up, we're up five year high right now, and I think what you'll, what you'll see in the next slides, we're at, you know, we had pretty good permitting history in twenty two and twenty three, eighty three and eighty. And actually, it's good that it's high this year as well. That makes me believe next year, the actual units constructed or occupied is gonna stay high. And then if we get subdivisions, hopefully stay high, but otherwise it's gonna start dropping off.
If somebody gets a permit, is it only good for so long before they have to like read, like? Can they get a permit and wait five years?
I don't know, no, I don't know exactly what it is. Six months, six, oh yeah, six months maybe is, is likely.
Where subdivision, it's like twenty four months, isn't it?
The subdivision is valid for two years, and then the building permit, once it gets issued, is only valid for about six months. Yeah.
Quick question, just a quick question on that last slide. Do we have? Maybe, you don't, not for this year, but maybe for the next one, like kind of data shows where we're at relative to other cities on like a, or a half, but basis. Faster than the regions, slower than the region.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, these, this slide uh shows the units actually constructed. So again, um, on the right. See from twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, um, somewhat mirrors the, the permits issued, so we had the low of construction in twenty twenty one. Um, this year's been uh the high of the last five years, ninety three units. Kind of coincides with um the number of units permitted both last year and this year. Again, the majority of uh units constructed are detached, single family. The, the fourteen percent multifamily, it accounts for the townhouse units that are located just uh over there, the Oregon Street Townhouses. So by and large, um. We have single family detached homes being built here because primarily we have detached, single family vacant lots. In subdivisions, both in like the Denali uh P U D and down there at Brooklyn Road.
We have, we're not certainly. Uh developers taking advantage of the uh middle housing bill.
No, not since I've, not since, the summer since I've been here.
Any ADUs applied for? So only have four last. Early in the year, the interest rates. And um that may be part of.
Yeah, even before that, I think they started going high twenty twenty two even, twenty two, twenty three.
Yep, yep.
Yep, I'm sure we answered this last year, but just to confirm. And for, for the purposes of calculating constructed, it's when the occupancy permit is issued.
Correct, yeah, meaning move in can happen, yes. And then um I'll go over the legislation from last year, and then I'll go over outlook for twenty twenty five. But um three main, there was really a, a housing package is what it was called, so three different bills. Um, two of them, two of them are funding related, top and bottom, and in the middle is uh lot regulation. And policy, but the, the first and second, or first and last are mainly um. First one is, is funding for housing uh services, but also affordable housing uh projects directly. The last one there. Uh, grants to cities uh for delivering housing that has uh income, you know, threshold requirements. Thirty percent of the dwelling units affordable to workforce housing, so those are grants um. And, and uh loans, and then the middle one is a whole lot of different policy and regulation. They created what's called the Housing Production and Accountability Office, so dedicated staff at D L C D and, and other departments to monitor how cities are doing. Terms of how the housing production, um. Man, there was a lot in here, U G B, some, some one time U G B expansions. Um, and then the big one for us that we've talked about a lot, of course, is uh the, the mandatory adjustments for cities. And um just on that specifically, so what it was, we've talked about it, but it requires cities to uh approve adjustments or variances when the density is over seventeen units per acre. And the developer can show that that variance either reduce the cost of housing, uh increases the number of units, you know, somehow makes progress towards the housing goals. Um, we did learn very recently from our land use attorney that we can actually apply for, cities can apply for an exception to that mandatory law, I guess. Um. Before, as the bill was written previously, my understanding was that the city had to offer all of the adjustments. That, that the bill wants us to just approve automatically. So if it's in our, in our code already, potentially we could qualify for the exemption. We don't allow. We don't allow uh side yard setbacks, which is the one, and we recently updated the code, who said, look, we really don't want these really narrow, you know, types of developments. So we said, no, no side yard acceptance adjustments. Um, our understanding now, based on some input from our attorney, is that we can actually go by line item uh in the adjustments. And I do need to verify this, talk with the state, but Sean and I are gonna look into this. So we could potentially get an exception for everything except for those side yard adjustments, basically, and in effect, it requires us to more or less still approve it, but the, the um. The criteria for approval is then in our hands, instead of just a mandatory, just approving for any reason, basically. So, so it's better. So we're gonna look into that, give us a little bit, probably just two weeks or so to look into that, figure out exactly. But I think if it makes sense, the city staff, city staff will apply to get the city out from underneath that, that man, those mandatory adjustment regulations.
And then just, just real quick, I just wanna thank Eric and the staff, cause the staff spent a lot of time on fifteen thirty seven. We had a lot of meetings with the governor's office. Sherwood was actually able to get some changes. We didn't like the bill overall, but we did get some changes. But that helped us, like for instance, we got the uh um height adjustments for cottage clusters taken down.
Yep. Common, common sense stuff, I mean, like, very common sense, and they just needed someone to say it, so. And thank you for, to you as well, for all that, all that advocacy. Um, so looking just the outlook for twenty twenty five, um, development outlook. Really, it's going to be the, the, the Brookman edition where we're seeing continued growth. So you can see here, these gray areas that haven't been subdivided yet, it's really just a mapping issue, we haven't updated the map. But these are in the city, they've been subdivided, and so we're gonna see continued permits being pulled here. I just, we can run the numbers, but I'd say anywhere between another hundred and two hundred lots in here. Um, and then we're gonna see continued growth in the Denali area as well. Um, as of course, the, the very low density Denali subdivision. So that would be lower density, and then high density, we're expecting Highway ninety nine, we're seeing a lot of interest along Highway ninety nine, there's some um. Uh, commercial uh zones that allow housing, there's just some straight up uh residential zones, of course, that allow housing, but we are seeing higher density proposals through the pre apps on Highway ninety nine. Um, we're also seeing that along uh Sherwood Boulevard, so I expect that's gonna be the trend for the next few years, is Brookman, Denali, and then Highway ninety nine and Sherwood Boulevard, and Old Town, of course, is like what we're gonna see. Um, and then in terms of actual planning work that we're doing, long range planning, we have the uh Old Town Strategic Plan that will wrap up uh this year, which will get to a little bit of housing policy in there, likely including some, maybe some site specific proposals for the U R A. Uh, we're gonna start companies planning for Sherwood West, that's gonna have a major housing component to it. Um, and then, of course, the long session kicked off today, actually started today, and we will track, uh, track that as well. Um, you know, over, there is a housing bill that's proposed by the governor's office, I was just looking over that. Um, a lot of middle housing, a lot of uh policy that would address, I think, perceived issues in the middle housing code, H B two thousand one. Sort of coming back and fixing a lot of stuff. Um, and then I do see some things that we probably wanna track pretty closely and be concerned about. Um, for example, I see one in here that's removed the uh courtyard requirement for cottage clusters. Um, and it does say in here to be replaced with something else, I guess, some other carrots, if you will, for the community. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but things like that, that we probably wanna be concerned about and track.
Yeah, and I think there was uh some footprint, footprints for cottage cluster adjustments as well. Uh, would definitely wanna track that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what they might suggest as a replacement for the courtyard. Something that would work, um, yeah.
My concern is that it gets watered down, you know, of course, um, so.
Get rid of setbacks, you get rid of the common space, you know, suddenly you have rural houses.
Yep, yep. Um, so that's, that's the very brief um overview of the housing report. Happy to take any questions, especially if you guys have information that you'd like included, you know, it's a straightforward, pretty basic report, just on production. Um, if we wanna get into more heavy analysis, we could do that, um, just kind of what you guys are looking forward to get out of this report.
Yeah.
No, this is perfect, uh, great job, thank you. Um, we did that kind of back of the envelope study last year. Infrastructure constrained um housing land. I think that's something we should maintain and keep going, cause there's been a lot of movement, Salem on freeing up dollar, infrastructure dollars.
Yep, for us, some of that, yep.
And uh we just need to be in a really good place to defend why we need it.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to, uh, we've already talked to our consultants about the four million dollars we need for the Brooklyn line, see if we can't get that into like a Christmas tree bill or something like that, so.
Yep, yeah, cool. Yep, we can bring that back, I know Sean about.
So is there a, I, and I know you can't really do this without talking to the builders, but is there a reason nobody's taking advantage of the higher density they're able to build on these single family homes? Do they just think they're not gonna sell in Sherwood? Do they? They're expensive to build, but theoretically, you'd be able to rent them out for.
You mean the ADUs?
Not, not only ADUs, but just putting a, a fourplex on a, on a lot, you know, or doing, or, you know, that's what I'm, the fact that we had that law and we had zero people try to take advantage of it, right? We were worried that, oh, okay, this will change the whole variety, you know, the feel of the neighborhood or whatever, and.
I'm guessing there's still, because the majority of people coming short still want single family. That's probably why, it's, it's the buy of man, right?
Right, but, okay, that's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing, because we don't have anything except single family, and so, so it's one of those things where, well, it's not, it's not totally true, but it's, but it, it, you know, we've said for a long time, hey, we don't really have places for people to age in place, and you know, the, the smaller homes and stuff like that, and so we, we know that we have this need. Right? Or we just say we're only gonna solve it in Sherwood West?
I, well, I think there's, I think there, there's kind of two different things you're talking about here, right? You're talking about. I think we agree there's a, the need for more diverse housing, and that we have plans to solve that in Sherwood West. I think when you're talking about H P two thousand one, you're talking about that's something a little different. It's, you know, and I think that comes in two flavors. I think someone going in to build a subdivision with a plan of utilizing H P two thousand one, I think it's just too early, because like Brookman, all that stuff was planned out before H P two thousand one was ready. So there really hasn't been a subdivision that started the, their, their process, that's come in in time to take advantage of that, cause no one's gonna change their plans that late in the game, it's too much money invested. But I think that's the other, and the other where you'd see H P two thousand one utilize is more on single family, like, tear down and rebuild, right? Like, if somebody is gonna tear, like, we see that Portland a lot, right? And I still, I don't know that we have a lot of mature neighborhoods where that would pencil out for people, but there's certainly some areas where that could happen on a one-off basis. I, I agree, I think you're exactly right. Um, Brookman, the, the really big subdivision that really kicked off Brookman was two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and H P two thousand one was two thousand nineteen, and then we had to go through our own code update. So the subdivision passed before the middle housing bill pass, and I think it's, a lot of it is just developer product, you know, developer model for their, for their um financing structure, all that sort of thing. So I think they really gotta be ready and have the middle housing in mind to really go through the entire planning and development process. It's hard to switch kind of mid, mid development. It's hard based on the size of the lots, setbacks, the depth of the lots, um, the, the, the pricing model, ev- everything, kinda so. Um, what will be interesting, if we go back, you know, there's in, in the Brookman edition, there are some you know, ten to thirty acre lots that are gonna be very, um, sorry. Pretty you know, they're gonna be ripe for development, especially once, I'm sorry, I can't find the map, but they're gonna be ripe for development, once the, once the Brookman Trump line goes in, and I'll be curious to see at that point, especially as it moves closer to Highway ninety nine, where there's more commercial planned as well. If that changes the dynamic of things for middle housing, um, at least in the, in the current U G B, so.
Yeah, and, and we don't think that, as we plan and do master planning for Sherwood West. We don't think this will be a problem, because we're in a specifically say we want this density and that we're gonna zone particular areas, cause what I don't wanna get to is at the end. You know, we've been promising, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this problem and have variety of housing in Sherwood. And I don't wanna get to the end of it and go, um, we still only have single family homes.
Well, our zoning types are gonna force multifamily.
That's what I'm, I'm just double checking and pressuring, yeah, okay.
But I don't think I don't think we've ever committed to say, we wanna encourage developers to go upsize all the single family detached either.
No, in fact, I'm not even saying that, I li- I'm literally saying, like, we gotta get some variety and, and differences, right? You know, it can't just be.
Yeah, I think that's.
But those outcomes are measured over decades, not.
Right, but that's the thing, is that I wanna make sure that we're on the, yeah, the right path with Sherwood West to say, hey, doing it this way will help us to make sure that in forty years we'll go, oh, we're still a single family home ninety eight percent, ninety nine percent.
I, I think it will, because I think just with H P two thousand one passing, I think that the development community, the builders are really starting to, to understand the products, understand the zones, understand how the cities are seeing it. And so I think there's just gonna be more preparation to deliver that product when we're planning, and by the time we get to construction, certainly for Sherwood West. Um, the other thing I think is a really good point is the age of the city. Portland's, you know, many, many houses platted in the early nineteen hundreds. Very old houses, you know, makes sense to, to demo them and, and put a fiveplex in, where it just doesn't make sense here in Woodhaven, you know, just the economics. The economics just don't make sense to tear down the middle housing here, and so I think we're just in this, I think we're gonna get there, we're just it just hasn't have, the conditions haven't really been ripe for it, I think is a good way to say it here in Sherwood.
In, in, in the history of H P two thousand one, it was one developer who happened to be the president of the Home Builders Association. Who did a lot of work in Portland, that was struggling with HOAs and a whole bunch of different issues and getting stuff done. And that's partly where that's, that was the genesis of two thousand.
Two thousand one.
Um, can we include a slide for uh like housing needs and what this is affecting, like what kind of impact we're making on that?
Like out of our housing needs analysis, like where are we at?
Is that appropriate for this, or?
Yeah, let me think about uh how we can show that. Um, we can probably do it. Um. My concern is really heavy analysis, you know, in terms of like what has been taken off and what's been. And so like usually, so we do that, we're required to do it every six years in, in a lot of detail, through the H and A housing needs analysis. But if there's a, if it's okay, sort of a back and napkin way, that we can say like, hey, here's, here's.
Just a very gross.
You shouldn't have this much of each type of housing.
Right, right.
And we can say progress toward that goal, such as the H and A, you know.
Yeah, something like that.
Well, there's twenty twenty, twenty twenty one bill too, that we have to put together a housing production strategy, which probably be another. All right, we're running a few minutes behind here. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. All right. We are ready for Washington County, if you guys have any questions, take your time. All right, are you guys ready? All right, um. Welcome everyone again, uh, second half or second, uh, two thirds of our, our work session, we have Washington County Supportive Housing Services here. Kristen, you're.
Yes, we were going to be joined this evening by Megan Cohen as well, and she's our new shared housing liaison. Um, we share her, her with Tigerd and Twalton. She's online tonight, she's, there she is, um, she just got back from a trip and isn't feeling well. So she was going to be here and introduce Washington County, but wasn't able to make it. I hope we can have her up soon to meet all of you in person as well. So thanks for being here. Megan, but I'll just, we can just turn it over to you guys, thank you for coming out.
Thanks for having us. Well, we'll start with quick intros, and I'll just say, if you haven't had the chance to meet Megan, you all are very lucky to have her. She's a great resource and a great partner to the county, um, and, and ensuring we're meeting the needs of, of local cities. And I'll start by saying my name for the record, Nicole Sting, I use she, her pronouns, I serve as strategic initiatives and relations manager in the homeless services division of Washington County, and I am joined by
Jessie Adams, I am the strategic projects coordinator on Nicole's team at the gun. Use your pronouns.
And we're here just to give a, a quick update on what's been going on with supportive housing services. My understanding, this is a first time we've come to your council, so we have a bit more background than we typically provide. You have the full annual, well, you have a mostly full annual report there, there's additional attachments online. We didn't print the seventy pages of data attachments, you're welcome to go to the Q R code on that, that printout and, and dig in. But we'll start with just um a bit of a reminder of why we're here. Our last annual report was the, the supportive housing services program year two report, and we shared Russell's story. At the time, Russell was coming out of an encampment of, in Aloha, and had just gotten into the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter. Thanks to supportive housing services, to the voters for endorsing this measure, we're able to provide resources to bring Russell inside. He now is permanently housed with a regional long-term rental assistance voucher that comes with wraparound supports and services, so he can be connected to employment support and, and get um his life where he wants it to go and, and back on track and supporting our community. Um, and we're really grateful to be able to share Russell's story, because his story shows what it takes to do this work. A lot of folks see homelessness and they think, gosh, why is it so hard to solve? You just heard a little bit about the deficit of housing units that are contributing to that. There's also barriers to folks getting into housing. Russell was someone that needed to build relationships with service providers. He needed to hear that it was possible for him to become um housed again after being homeless for over seven years. Um, and Russell's story, um, is just one of the thousands of people that have been impacted by supportive housing services. You'll hear a lot of numbers today, but I want you to think of Russell as we think of those numbers. Each one of them is a person with their own life story, their own background, who was given a second chance and is taking it um and, and making their lives better. I wanted to just give a context for what S H S is, supportive housing services, we'll slip between S H S and supportive housing services, like I hope that's all right with you. Just a reminder, this was proved by voters in twenty twenty. It levies a um high income tax, earners' tax and a uh business tax on um, grow on, excuse me, on businesses with high gross receipts, so it's a moderate tax on, on those two um entities. And it makes up over ninety five percent of our budget in the homeless services division. Every shelter we open is thanks to S H S dollars. Um, and the goal, the regional goal for this investment is five thousand um home, folks experiencing homelessness brought inside and stabilizing about ten thousand households. I'm um incredibly excited to meet, we are, as Washington County, really close to meeting our portion of that goal. Um, that's one thousand six hundred and sixty seven, can't forget that seven, um, folks brought inside. We're, we're gonna hit that this year, um, it's really exciting to say, and the stabilizing, um, ten thousand households, we're really close to meeting that goal as well, just four years into this ten-year program. Um, and part of that success is the way we look at our homeless services system. Uh, we see it as not a linear step-by-step process, but really uh, a system that's circular can meet people where they're at. So you'll see three key components, um, when Jessie shares the updates on our, our progress in the last year, you'll hear more about them. But just to take a step back and walk you through them, I'll start in the middle, housing is our ultimate goal. We wanna get folks permanently housed, stable, ready to, to contribute to the society in the way they see fit. Um, but we also need shelter to get folks there, it's the, the bridge to get people into our system. And before people reach shelter, they're typically talking to an outreach worker, they're talking um to a shelter staff person. Um, and we're helping them move through the system, and all along the way, there are services to support folks in need. Employment services are really key, it's uh services supporting folks getting enrolled for public benefits, making sure their social security dollars are helping them stay housed, that, those sorts of things. So it's not just Stix and Brex housing that we do in housing services, it really is the human work of, of, of addressing homelessness crisis. And to take a step back, we've done a lot of work, thanks to S H S. Prior to this work, we had twelve case uh outreach workers, caseworkers combined, uh, serving the entire county. So you can imagine twelve people for all of Washington County is insufficient. If you, if you grab a happy hour with Jessie, sometimes she'll tell you about those days of, of just twelve folks supporting people on the streets. Um, what's even better than that is the amount of folks are able to bring inside. Well, we mobilized severe weather shelter this weekend, and the need for it is incredibly decreased, because the amount of permanent shelter beds we have online. And these, these shelter beds are not like what we've had in the past, these are site-built, um, designed with the client in mind, so we're, they're designed and create an atmosphere to get folks where they need to be, in, in taking into account what are their psychological needs when they're coming into shelter. Um, and that's what we've been able to do. And the other really exciting piece is that housing capacity, and having just heard from your planners, you might not quite know what I mean by that word. Um, housing capacity essentially means slots or vouchers, so when you think of section eight, uh, housing choice vouchers. The, it's, it's pretty transferable here, except for the housing slots that come from the homeless services side of things, come with, again, those supportive housing resources. Come with, again, those supportive housing resources, the the employment services and other things to help folks get on track. And with that brief overview, I'm going to turn it over to to Jessie to talk through what we were able to accomplish last fiscal year.
Hey, everybody. Again, I'm Jessie. And as Nicole mentioned, um, I do have a lot of experience with the homeless services here in Washington County. I started way back as we nineteen-year-old years and years and years ago in a shelter. Where I literally answered the phone and told people to go to Multnomah County and good luck to you because we had nothing. So we have built um from a five million dollar a year system that helped very few people to an over hundred million dollar a year system that I'm going to talk a little bit about here. So we went from that system of only five billion dollars and four workers to um spending a hundred percent of our SHS budget in three years. That is an astronomical amount of work that we could not have done without our um partners and jurisdictions and in the um. Community providers that do this work for us every day. Um, of that hundred percent budget, that means we served um to over ten thousand people with all of our programs together. That means twelve hundred people moved into housing. As Nicole mentioned, we are getting close to hitting that sixteen hundred or just over sixteen hundred goal. And um we also helped over four thousand remained housed, because again, you got to stop those info numbers too. You can't just have the people that are already out there. You got to stop people from becoming homeless as well. So next slide. It's a little deeper dive into those numbers. Um, and this is just looking at last year, not overall. So um last year, the permanent supportive housing, we didn't quite hit the goal of five hundred households, but we went over our goal for the previous year. So as again, as Nicole mentioned, we are on track to meet our overall goal there. Um, rapid rehousing and move-in ready launched a little bit later than we expected, so we didn't quite hit those goals either. But as we've found with uh building these services, again, small system to a big one, the year program launched, we were to get going and the next year it really, really takes off. Um, eviction prevention uh serves primarily population B that is at risk of becoming homeless, as I mentioned. It is our most effective program at reaching underserved populations. Um, and you'll see there that we far exceeded that goal. Um, I do want to mention that it has been funded with dwindling carryover investments, and Nicole's going to talk a little bit more about what's happening next for the victims.
Good question on the eviction. So we was, I think it was last year, one of our um. Presser returns, we mentioned it. Um, we had a private equity firm buy out our complex and they immediately checked. The rates thirty and forty percent. And we had a one individual there that we talked to quite a bit, who tried to get parental assistance, but was told. They had to have an eviction notice before they qualified. Are we looking at that? Because we're basically telling people, you got to go destroy your credit rating before you can get help. And I'm just curious if. What's, is that, is that true? First of all, is it true? And second of all, is that's something you're looking at, trying to get ahead of that, so people aren't taking a step backwards to get a step forward.
So first part of the question, yes, that is historically true, that um is a requirement of most state and federal funding. To have a, you have to be at risk of becoming homeless. And the way you show that you are at risk of becoming homeless is you were going to lose your housing in fourteen days or less. And most of the time you prove that with an eviction notice. So um one of the great things about SHS is it's a locally funded program. And we get to have, say, with Metro and our jurisdictional partners about how that works. Um, and that's what some of the move-in ready and short-term solutions and rapid rehousing funds can do. Um, so we have housing liaisons that can talk to people at access centers and other points of entry into our system and help with that prior to an eviction notice. Sometimes it's always a, it depends what money they have access to at that point in time. A lot of, it depends, which is not always a fun answer, but it does depend on what. Um, depends on what funds are available, essentially. Yeah. So your situation one day might fit what funding is available and great, and the other day.
For our community that's listening, could you explain rapid rehousing versus, I understand permanent support, but rapid rehousing?
Yeah, rapid rehousing is a short-term rental program. It's two years. Um, where we're working towards housing stability for a family for those two years. So we pay a portion of the rent, they pay a portion of their rent based on their income. And you're working towards a stability with job or school or something at the end of those two years, where permanent supportive housing is, as the name suggests. Permanent, the voucher isn't going anywhere.
Oh, so when they go up into permanent supportive housing, their vouchers go down with them? Or they're on their own at that point?
Permanent supportive housing comes with a housing voucher and the supportive services, as Nicole mentioned, and it is permanent. The voucher does not go away after the two years. As long as funding allows, right? Yes.
Or your income is is at a rate.
So there's a review process.
Yeah.
Yes.
And one, one thing I just note from there, it's it's not common for someone to move from uh rapid rehousing into permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is really designed to serve those that might may maybe have more acute needs. And rapid rehousing is for folks that kind of just need some some quick rental assistance, deposit money to get back on their.
And then hopefully they're being self-sufficient.
Mm-hmm, right.
When people are in permanent supportive housing. Like what percentage of those people move out of that every year? So they they've got their income up or their certain bits improved to the point where they don't need permanent supportive housing anymore, is that?
Don't have the number. We can get that, but it's small. Um, I mean, we have a kind of a titrated system. So as Nicole mentioned, it's comes with supportive services. So sometimes people get to the point where they're stable enough. Um, or they might not need the supportive services and case management support, and maybe they just need the rental assistance because they're only going to be on disability, right? They're not going to increase their income, but so they need that kind of permanent support, but don't need the services with it. So we have a graduated system where they can move up that way. Um, sometimes people do come off the vouchers entirely. Um, but it's, it's.
I did think of a quasi way to get at at this question. Um, we have a a retention rate for permanent supportive housing. So essentially, what percentage of folks that were there at the beginning of the year or there at the end of the year? For our permanent supportive housing, that's around ninety percent. That's a little bit higher than industry average, but industry average is really driven by. Um, what what we call um unsuccessful exits. So folks exiting to a place that is not some other permanent housing situation.
Thank you.
So I apologize on that last, I missed the last comment that you made, but people that are on it at the beginning of the year versus the end, the ninety percent, the ten percent. Some percentage, some chunk of them graduate out because they're doing great with another, another chunk. Fall out of the system. What's that kind of split like?
I I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, but it it's unfortunately common that folks who are experiencing homelessness are often seniors. And what is common for seniors is when they get that security of of housing, they often let go. So unfortunately, that is a common. Um, people passing away with a permanent supportive housing voucher is very common. Um, and uh it's, no, evictions are not uncommon for folks with PSH. Maybe they weren't quite ready to get into housing. We tried it and it just didn't work that time.
So looking into the populations served, um, as I mentioned, eviction prevention um is especially effective in reaching diverse populations. Um, we also are really intentional in the SHS measure. It's written into the measure itself uh to partner with culturally specific providers to increase that reach into those underserved populations. That's been a particularly effective in Washington County with Latane households. Um, and SHS-funded interventions, again, I think because we are very intentional from, again, the creation of the measure. Um, that the outcomes in SHS are more diverse than other homeless services programs. Um, we have noticed that improvements are needed in better-serving Asian and Native populations that is um under-served according to the percentage of the population. Um, so we're looking at why that is. Is it access points? Um, is it that there's different kind of interventions needed? Is it more population B than population A? So we're looking into what we can do to better serve.
Percentage of the overall population or percentage of the houseless community?
Oh.
Percentage of population experiencing poverty.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, that makes, that makes more sense, yeah.
So outreach and access centers, this is um as the name says, is where people access our programs. These are our first uh point of contact with most folks. Um, so you can see that the county is broken up into sections. So down in South County here, you have Just Compassion and ERCO are the two um agencies that have the outreach contracts for this part of the county. Um, and then you'll see the stars denote where we are, eventually we'll have all of our access centers. We aren't quite there yet. That is part of my job to get us to the point where we have four. Right now, we um are building one in Hillsborough that has just started construction. We are looking for a site in Beaverton, have awarded a site in Cornelius. And you all are going to be the very first in South County to open one. Just compassion is opening theirs, I think, hopefully in March. Looks like they're going to complete construction in February and should be open in March to um not only increased shelter capacity, but access center services as well.
So is an outreach and an access center two different things?
Yeah.
What do they do? What are the differences?
So outreach teams um go out into the community and meet people literally where they are, uh parks, wherever they're hanging out. And um try to get to build those relationships, as Nicole mentioned, with Russell. Russell wouldn't even come to an access center at the beginning. You really had to go to where he was and build that trust with him. And then access center is a site that is going to offer basic need services, showers, food, um haircuts, stuff like that.
Okay, but not beds and.
It's not a shelter. They cannot stay overnight. They will be open seven to seven, seven days a week. It will be closed overnight. They will be eventually used as um inclement weather shelter, but um will not be a daily use shelter, no. That is again slightly different with your all's access center because it is going to be a full resource center. So part of it will function as an access center and part of it will be a shelter. So that's a little bit of a nuance for you all.
A resource center is different than an outreach and an access center?
Yeah, Just Compassion um had a resource center and a shelter already and applied for funding to make it bigger. So they are running a full-blown resource center and they will have both things on site, yes.
It's a huge campus.
Yeah.
And that's been a fifteen-year process for Just Compassion to build it out. It's pretty amazing.
And here's what our shelter system looks like both now, and it'll look a little bit different in the future. If you see um on the list that it does say that there are temporary sites listed there. Um, so we cited some temporary shelters, like a clover relief at the um community or the county fair. We cited some pod villages throughout the county as well to kind of take some of the pressure off while we built the big um congregant sites like Just Compassion. We also just opened a Beaverton site in December. So you can see kind of the scattering throughout um the county that's really intentional. Again, on part of SHS, we very much want there to be different kinds of shelter throughout the county so people can access the type of shelter that they need where they need it to be.
The shelters where you come, you have to show up in line at five o'clock at night and leave at seven o'clock in the morning and get back in line next night and hope you can bed now.
No, um, they're run through a referral system through Community Connect. Um, and so once you get a referred bed, it is your bed for as long as you need it. We do not have a time limit. Um, obviously, we, you know, expect people to follow rules and be safe and all of that and work with a case manager toward finding housing, but we do not have a time limit where people have to go. Um, and they do not have to leave during the day either. We are now purpose-building shelters so people can stay there all day.
I know, I know you have a veteran, veteran shelter. Thank you for that. Um. Are you, do you have wraparound services that are specific for the veterans? Because a lot of times they have issues that a lot of us don't have in terms of PTSD and some of those things.
So we don't, um, through the county and the SHS funds, but SSBF, uh, Supportive Services for Veterans and Families. Um, is an awesome federal program that I used to be a case manager for, and it is really robust in that for a ton of those services. And the veteran shelter in Beaverton um has managers, and a lot of times they go directly from the um SSBF program to a VASH voucher and get those wraparound services with their VASH voucher.
And I might add as well, just to to add to that, we we also um have a partnership with Daves and Disability Aging and Veterans. I always forget our own acronyms. Um, but uh we we fund uh staffers to provide kind of that connection support. So we are providing kind of internal referrals to our own VSOs.
Your guys' veteran um authors at the town is amazing. That's specifically one person that I know who has helped me tremendously when answering, helping fill out applications out for my mom and sisters. I haven't been, now such services have existed until somebody said, oh, just call the county, what?
They're really great. And we do actually have um ten VASH vouchers at one of our permanent supportive housing buildings. So we do have a resident services coordinator that provides support to those units if they need it. Um, yeah, we don't find direct specific veteran services with SHS. So here's a little deeper dive into the shelter program outcomes. We have four hundred and thirty-three shelter beds, four hundred and twenty funded by SHS. Again, um, those numbers Nicole showed at the very beginning, we had forty-seven um before SHS came, and they were all for families, a couple for veterans and none for a single adult. So that is a crazy number in three years. Um, we do have sixty pod shelters that are currently open. Those have been really, really effective for getting people to come inside. Sometimes it's hard to imagine coming into a building and being with all, surrounded by all of these other peoples. The pod site's been really effective at. Um, people have been maybe outside and um aren't quite ready to take the next big step. So we are looking um for some other land to host a more permanent pod shelter when those. Yeah, those are pallet homes. Those are at um two, or we used to have three pod sites, one closed. And at the two that are open now, one is pallet homes and one is conestoga huts, which looks a little bit different. Those are the pallet homes. And then I mentioned the Beaverton Year Round Shelter opened in December. That was sixty additional beds. Just Compassion is opening here in March, I think is the current plan. Um, and then, um, yeah, as I mentioned, exploring for additional pot shelter.
Is that that pod village, is that where the safe parking used to be?
No, we have, that one is actually in Aloha, at the Aloha United Methodist Church. And then there's one um in Cornelius by the Walmart.
Is there still safe parking options?
We don't fund safe parking. That is something that um Beaverton and Tigerd fund through city.
Megan, I know you don't have that answer.
Yes, there are, um, they are directly city-funded. So Beaverton and Tigerd both have programs. Um, Beaverton has five operating sites um for three households each, because they can serve both. Adults and children living out of their vehicles, um, and that's attached to case management as well, too. And then Tigerd has one uh currently operating site uh for three households, um, but is planning to bring on a second site. Um, in March uh as well. So that program uh will be expanding hopefully to three sites before the end of this year.
Thank you.
So I think Megan gave me a great segue into this slide because um this work cannot be done without everybody all together, right? We have funds, yes, mainly from the SHS measure, but we also blend in funding from uh the governor's office and executive orders. We have state funding. The shelters were built, yes, with state and federal money as well. Um, and then, of course, our city partners, we can't do this work without all of us doing it together, not to mention the day-to-day work, right, of the community organizations. Um, so really just want to highlight Megan's contribution, especially in making sure all of that stuff works together. Because that is um a lot of people trying to do the same work as well as, you know, working with your law enforcement and libraries and other things on the ground here. So again, very excited to have Megan's expertise for y'all. Um, and then just a little bit of cross-sector alignment as well, because again, this is uh work that we can't do alone. It is expensive work and we need other money to do it well. So um here highlighting the work that we do with the health services. Um, really quick, the first bullet, actually talking about law enforcement and community partner referrals. The shelters have e-beds, so if law enforcement comes across someone who needs an emergency bed, they can access those. Um, and then we are working with Care Organ to develop, to develop a permanent supportive housing in Forest Grove that will specifically be for high-acuity folks there. Um, we have a low-acuity transitional support program that is basically people who are transitioning out of the hospital, partnering with Greater Good Northwest Virginia Garcia. To make sure folks that aren't leaving the hospital onto homelessness, so providing them additional care there. That's in partnership with Kaiser as well. Um, and then we do have a nationally leading healthcare uh case conversing system. So we have the first of its kind where we are talking with housing and healthcare providers together to make sure that folks can access like that last program. Um, and we really want to continue to do that with the Medicaid waiver rolls out. We can start paying for housing and really make those programs or um. Services talk to each other because they never really have, right? And it's not going to work if you leave rehab or certain, you know, having surgery and going back outside. Good for anybody um health-wise or hopefully it's, you know, resources are scarce. We want to make sure they work well together. Um, city liaisons um is a really good example of the provider partnerships. Megan can wave again up there. She is, of course, your city liaison. Um, and then uh we want to highlight our service providers as well. Um, we partner or contract with twenty-four service providers to do the things that I've been talking about, the case management, the outreach, the access centers, the shelters. Um, and they all have a really high rate of staff with lived experience. That's really important to the services we provide to be able to meet people where they're at, to have people who understand what what they're going through. Uh, we also have really high rates of staff that identify um as persons of color compared to the general population. Again, we're seeing, you know, um, over-representation, right, and poverty and homeless populations of those populations. So we want to make sure, again, staff um represent the community that they're serving. Um, and then we want to make sure that people who do this incredibly difficult work can earn a living wage. So we make sure that there are salaries between the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range at entry level so that we um, yeah, can maintain the uh. Work of these folks, because there's a really high turnover rate and burnout rate. We want to make sure that they're compensated fairly for the tough work that they're doing. Uh, we also have a housing careers program. There are currently forty-five participants. Um, and we're going to expand out to general employment next year. We've really been using it to help fill in the service provider staff and um help those ratios with the lived experience and the um diverse staff as well. But we're going to expand that to general employment services. And then we, of course, have advisory bodies to make sure we are doing this work well, properly, um, so that. Um so that here we rolled out a new governing structure and that resulted in our homeless solutions advisory council or solutions council. And that's ten members pictured there. Um and then there's also, of course, subcommittees who delve dive deeper into the work. Um and some of the highlights there, performance evaluation again to make sure we're doing it right and well. Lived experience to make sure their voices are heard and equitable procurement to make sure the money is going to um agencies that it should be going to. That all of that is done fairly.
And one more thing I'll note on the slide, as Jesse is about to turn it over to me, says recruitment underway. And for sh- maybe unfortunately for the vast listening audience, we have filled our recruitments. We are no longer recruiting for the solutions council as we love to call it in homeless services. Um uh but we we've just rounded out with with four new stellar folks. So uh if you are interested in tracking our work, I know that there's a lot of things you could do with your free time. Um but this is a great uh meeting to tune into to to see what's happening in in the homeless services world. Um and they've been helping us a lot with with our budget and that was a um selfish transition there. As I head into uh an overview of of our spending. So this is super high level budget categories and I just want to share a little bit about this. Um because SHS funding has been a topic of conversation um a lot recently. And and as we said in the beginning, we are spending the money. As you see here, the fiscal year budget we have for this fiscal year was built after of all the work we did in the previous three years. So system building has taken our time. We are actually at the point where unfortunately, we're going to have to go down the arc a little bit as we learn more about what SHS revenue means and what what we can expect from it. More on that in the next slide. But first, I want to highlight for you, um if you can, I quickly identify the fastest growing expense we have. And that's long term supportive housing. Uh rent, we have the most expensive rent in Washington County. It is expensive to continue to pay the rent. But this is, we know that this intervention is much cheaper than someone being in a jail cell or in a hospital bed. And we're excited to have that stability and that the peace of mind that it um creates for folks. So that is by far our largest um section of of our our budget is that long term assistance. The short term mental assistance is still a pretty significant portion of our budget. That's that rapid rehousing, eviction prevention. Um other resources fall under that bucket, the flex funds that that Jesse mentioned, where caseworkers have some some problem solving money for clients essentially. Um and you'll also note our shelter operations continue to grow. We'll see it grow a little bit more as the final shelters come up. And then we'll see that that um uh flat line there while um while some of the other costs are are more driven by inflation. We'll see those those continue to go up more and more. So um this was incredibly exciting to get to the moment where we've built a system up from a five million dollar system to what is currently a hundred and twenty million dollars budgeted.
One question on that. Um so um unfortunately, I've been way too involved in the county conversations on this. I I still don't understand that. I've asked a question a couple of times. Maybe it can help me. There, if you look at your hundred and twenty million dollar budget for this current twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, there was about a hundred million carryover on top of that. And when I asked the question about what's that being used for, they say, well, it's all accounted for.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a better understanding of, is that, you know, from a budgetary point of view, is it actually encumbered? Or is those planned projects? Like, it'd be great to really, for those conversations to understand, because there's a lot of people that look at that and go, that a hundred million dollars? They're carrying over. Why do they need more money? So I think that it would be helpful.
Thank you for that question. We don't, we don't have a slide on carryover, so I'll talk it through it and then I'll I'll follow up with Megan and make sure you get back.
Tell where it came from because you're getting.
Certainly a delta, certainly a delta. Um but a lot of what Jesse and her team work on is capital projects. Um and that is where the majority of our carryover is budgeted to. And it's not, actually, I say budgeted, it is, it is encumbered. It is um in contract or approved via the action of our board of county commissioners. Um so of that hundred-ish uh million carryover that looks like it's there on our our last reporting to Metro, what's actually not contractually obligated is fourteen million dollars. And what that fourteen million dollars represents are are three important things. First of which, that's the, our set aside resources for that access center in Beaverton. We've, we told um when we built our access centers, we said we'd set aside five million dollars for each access center to be built. Construction's really expensive. Um it's, that's what it takes. So we we set aside five million dollars for that. We also have two million dollars set aside for that pod land search. We've, as we've been uh operating the pods, we've, we've thought, oh, it's a short term ask from a community. We'll ask two years. We're realizing the administrative work of moving the pods, of managing moving them every two years is is too cumbersome and we're looking for a permanent site. So we have two million dollars set aside to purchase the land and to do any site improvements we need. So that's seven million. Now, where's the rest of the fourteen million? Um I'm going to quickly go here and I'll I'll go back to the slide. Um this hasn't been updated yet, but we're actually facing a fifteen million du- delta in our current budget this fiscal year. There is um sixteen point two million dollars of difference between what we, what we were expected or told to expect uh in October of twenty-three versus what we were told to expect in December of twenty-four. Um so we've uh worked with the Board of County Commissioner Commissioners and are asking that that seven point something million be set aside to help us transition our system down to what can be sustained um by this tax source. So um it it's not, that fourteen million dollars doesn't have a contract associated with it. It doesn't quite have a board action. But it is planned for for uses that will support our system of care here in Washington County. Um and I'll I'll follow up with with the details of that. There's been a number of conversations with our our board, so I can pull some some materials from that and make sure that you have it handy.
Are are you, um, there's some out there, um, the the Portland uh business PMC or whatever it's called. Will say you're, we're spending way more money than any other um large metropolitan area in the country. On a per ca-, you know, per capita, whatever you want to mention. I'm just curious, are you tracking metrics in terms of the the efficiency of the services? And then going out and comparing yourself to other regions and how they're doing it, just to make sure that we're just bringing every ounce of goodness out of every dollar, especially this is a tax source that's going to be variable. Cause it's based on income taxes. I mean, I'm just curious, because I, something I don't see in the reporting is is kind of like the the cost per analytics.
Yeah.
Looking at, you know, how do we compare to other regions?
Yeah, and I I I would offer maybe two points of thought there. The first one being um homeless, the homelessness crisis in our community came long after the feds were funding shelters. So in larger communities like Philadelphia, New York, those big east coast cities that have homelessness crises and homelessness problems, the federal government funded their shelters decades ago. Um so in our community, we have to build those from scratch. So our per cost is a little bit higher because we have all this startup. That that um communities that were larger before we were larger, had that federal support, then that federal support has since got away. So um when we look at our costs, a lot of our costs are those capital projects.
You could carve that out. You could carve that out in your metrics analytics and so.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And and that's kind of the next phase of our work is is getting into to understanding where are their cost savings. A lot of the cost savings we're be, we're undergoing right now um with our solutions council is looking at kind of the nuance of what what qualifies for something that's allowed for flex funds. How can we get tighter there? Um we want to tighten up, but we don't want to become so rigid that it's administratively burdensome for providers and they can't help people in need. So it's, it's that tight balance and and that hard um line we walk. And would, I know it's another ask of y'all, but if you, if you are interested in in diving in, our homeless solutions advisory council is really the place where we're getting into those conversations with providers and with with members of the community.
Are you, are you, is, do you have uh um representation from cities on that committee?
By our bylaws, um uh public officials cannot serve on uh the solutions council. Uh we do have representation, I believe, Megan, I can't recall if you're on that subcommittee, but um uh our cities are represented in the performance evaluation technical subcommittee. So that's, that's the 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 subcommittee that's diving into how was our system doing? We have representation from three cities on that committee.
That might get corrected with H two pad. Where that goes, they need a different name, that's why. Um, sorry, are there other questions?
I had a couple of comments, uh just some kudos, like the fact that you, um one of your three subcommittees is performance evaluation, I think, is worth noting. That's something that's often not uh considered in both public and private sector projects, right? So I really kudos for that. And then also, I mean, to stand up from nothing to where you're at in three years is Herculean, right? So well done on that. I mean, I, but to just, just the logistics of standing up an organization that fast is or building it up that fast is is not easy, both from manpower and everything else. Um and, you know, looking at your last chart, looks like your operational overhead is under twenty percent, probably what sixteen, seventeen percent, which I think is pretty good, you know, pretty good. So.
I could add to that point. Our county admin is is five percent and under. The, a lot of what you see there is paying for Community Connect or paying for Housing Careers Program. So that kind of falls under the program admin. So just to um as selfishly give myself some more kudos, um our our admin.
Totally. And I think the point I make is that it's nice to see that, you know, eighty-three percent roughly of the dollars are getting deployed um to the people who need it. Which is, you know, government is not always that efficient, so.
I think, I think part of the challenge is, um Washington County's in a great job. Um but the counties have been in silos, you know. Um and if you look at the overall um hit counts, the point in time counts, where our houseless population is actually rising. And and I think that's what the average voter sees. You know, we talked about SHS and of course Multnomah County and the city of Portland and all the. Everyone can watch the news, see what's going on there. So I think, you know, part of the, you know, as we think about the SHS renewal is how do we convince the voters they were on the right track, you know, because because the buckets fill not faster than we're emptying it on a region wide basis.
Yeah, and to to Doug's point, I love that you got the metrics and you're measuring how effective. There's a weird metric that's hard to measure that is, does it feel like the homeless problem is going in the right direction? And that's where that comes in. It's like, well, I, I can't really tell when I cross county line. But in certain areas, it doesn't feel like it's getting better. And so it's like, so me, and by the way, I think people, especially in this area, are willing to pay for it if it feels like it's being solved. If it, if it feels like, okay, well, this is a bucket that doesn't have a bottom, then it's like, well, okay, we're, we, we, we're doing. We got to try something different because it's just not.
Well, the good news is there's five years left on this levy. So a lot of right, the mayors have been saying, let's take a pause.
When I.
Not rush to the.
I want to appreciate you all for that letter. That is incredibly helpful. And it's the same message our board has been saying. We were, we always were, of course, here for continuous improvement. We, we're not doing it right. We, well, I'm not going to say that. We have ways we could do it better. That's what I'll say. We can always be improving. Um but we have to earn our right to ask voters to extend this. And um Jesse and her team are doing everything they can to show that there's going to be shelters open that weren't exist- in existence before. There'll be access centers. Or we funded transitional housing for the first time. I think probably it crossed the country in like a decade. People aren't funding, aren't funding this anymore. It's, it's a strategy that was kind of put aside and we're picking back up because it it worked. Um so when we have more sites open and we can point to voters and say, you know that shelter over there with eighty beds? Your tax dollars are keeping that open. That, to me, is when we should ask for an extension. When we, when we have something to say, if you don't extend it, this is what's at risk. And we're just.
And really, we're just got, we've just gotten fully operational. It's like, we don't have the data to know. Right, like that's part of the. Two, three years down the road, we'll have a lot better data. One question on the SHS, obviously Metro, how is the revenue dispersed out to the counties? Is it all just per capita or is there more complicated factors than that?
It's a percentage base that was an estimate of where they felt taxes would be collected. So for Washington County, um they, they estimated thirty-three point three percent of of the taxes would be collected. So that is the revenue in which we receive.
And what's our percentage of the metro population?
Actually, not sure. That's a great question.
I think it's got to be less than thirty.
What's Clackamas's percentage? If we got thirty-three and third.
Um I believe it's tw- it's twenty percent.
So we're getting the benefit of what we're, we're paying our county.
We have, we have higher incomes.
I'm getting, we're getting the best of the benefit we are paying into those.
Exactly, and and.
I want to get some lion's share.
Actually, the the largest, uh uh Multnomah County gets less than half of the SHS resources. So they get the largest. I I I always like to uplift that because um our our colleagues in Clackamas County are doing really great work as well. And that doesn't, us in Washington County and Clackamas County, we don't make the news the same way Multnomah County does. Um and in Clackamas County, they've, the, their long term rental assistance program, they've leased it up. They don't have room for any more folks. That's how, how well their system is doing. Um so I I always take the the chance to uplift our colleagues that are, that are also doing great work.
The other thing is, we're getting this report because we're elected official, but it's our community that's voting. And how, when, whenever the time comes, how do we get this report out to our community, you know?
In a meaningful way, because Taylor's right. I mean, it's, it doesn't feel like it, you know, a lot of voters, you know. Uh feeling, and they don't understand where the boundaries are. So you make a trip into downtown Portland, you experience something very different.
I know this is, this is a ship that's probably sailed, but I would be infinitely more likely to vote for this if it was a county program versus a metro program. But and the outcome would probably be the same or better, because the money would still go to all you. If it's all being siloed anyway in in delivery. But that's just me.
That reminds me of a question. Um. So i- is there a common um HMIS system across all the counties? So if someone does, if Clackamas County or Multnomah does an intake of an individual in the field in North Portland, they get on a bus and show up in Washington County, they're in your system, you know about them.
So it's the same system, but the system, even though it's the same system, doesn't quite talk the way it needs to. So we're, we're working with, actually, we want to thank our partners in Multnomah County for leading this effort on our behalf. But we're working on getting a new vendor that should improve the way we can cross, we can kind of talk across counties. But um there is other efforts to to increase data sharing among the counties, so so that can happen. It it seems obvious, why wouldn't you be able to just do that? But it's a lot like, if you think about the healthcare system, these are folks' private information. And if it's not set up for information sharing, there's a lot of security and and privacy barriers to to work through kind of person by person.
Right. I would even argue it right down to the devices they're using in the field should all be common going into the same system. You know, because it's a regional problem. And there's some out there that argue that Washington County's improved. As they all, everybody went to Multnomah County. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's, without that data, we don't know, right?
Yeah, but to your point also, though, if I'm a veteran in Clackamas and there's no beds there, but there are some in Washington County and I don't really care, that needs to be popped up on the screen in Clackamas. Hey, we've got a bed for you reserved in Washington County and here's the bus line that'll get you there, right? Or here's a, we can take you there. Like, like those, those specific, when they say, hey, here's a teenage shelter, right? Well, not every county, I mean, maybe they all have it, but maybe they don't have the same amount of bed, right? They need to be fungible. I think it's matchmaking and services.
Yeah, exactly. Think it's, it's.
But it's an.
Person, yeah, has that second contact having the benefit of all the information from the first contact. It's huge.
Yeah.
Instead of certain.
Yeah, that's part of the, I think, it being a regional effort is that exact goal of mine. So there are, uh the Tri-County Planning Body that exists right now, that is one of their goals, is um increased regionalization and the coordinated entry. Do exactly what you all are talking about to make sure when someone shows up in Washington County, we can see all of the stuff that maybe Multnomah, Clackamas already did not start at zero.
One, one piece I might add, because it 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 can be confusing if you're not from the system. Why can't you just make it work? Um it's important to to recognize the um coordinated entry systems were, are federally mandated by HUD. And each county is their own continuum of care. So we are all, we kind of built our own systems at required, following the HUD requirements, but what we felt worked in our community. And we're now doing the work of like, okay, well, how do we make our assessment questions the same? And how do we get those barriers down? So when we do have a new system, there can be more data sharing. So um I I certainly appreciate it can seem siloed on the side, but I talk to my county colleagues every single day about um our work. So we are doing quite a bit to to integrate. It's just.
All the results are. And every county's doing, you know, like Clackamas County does a lot more, correct? Cities, cities run programs. Um Multnomah County is different as we have seen, although that, I think they're on a good path, you know.
And by the way, I'm fine experimenting differently, right? Because something Clackamas do, does may work better than what we do. So let them try it out and then share that info to bring us over. I, I'm a little, um. Oh wait, we, we were almost done. I was going to say, I'm a little concerned about the ninety percent number you talked about at the beginning, where you're saying ninety percent of the people that were in long term housing uh assistance are also in it at the end of the month, I feel, or the end of the year. I feel, a- again, I don't know how long it it takes to get through that, but it feels like um A, that's a way to just to free up some of that big money in there for o- other people. But is that, is is there a way to bring that down so that it's not ninety percent that we can, you can say, hey, twenty-five percent of the people that come in are graduated in a positive.
Yeah, that's, that's the permanent, but I think you're, you're still getting at a great point. It's like you're in one of our meetings. So we have a program that we've been working on launching and that we're still, it's not quite launching the way we want, so we're twinkling, twinkering at the edges. But it's called a move on program. So it's kind of that first step to get someone um who's, who's no longer in need of case management services, kind of giving them to give up the case management services, which will, will cost our system, or will save our system money. But the reality is, these are folks that are making, you know, less than thirty percent of the area median income. If not for a a rental assistance voucher, there really isn't another option for them. Um even in kind of sticks and bricks affordable housing, that's up to sixty percent AMI. And I mean, I I can think of a few cases of folks I I know that live in affordable housing that can't afford their rent.
Yeah.
And you're finding, is it, some folks' income will never change. Except with disabilities, small increases, social security, small, or whatever that case would be. But I, there are some folks that could move out as their income increases and hopefully that's more encouraging.
Like, what's the average age of somebody who's in the long-term program?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I would probably guess sixty.
Generally, pretty, pretty old.
Yeah, oh.
Okay, so it's not like you could say, hey, we're gonna, you know, we'll do these new career skills or anything like that, that are really going to change your. Career prospects or anything.
There's, there's certainly some folks like that, maybe folks that have stumbled into an addiction and, and just need the support and stability to get out of that addiction. And then could have a, a fairly um, high income rise. But, but for the folks we're serving, we're seeing these are folks living on disability, living on social security, where. I mean, that, I can think of the place I rented ten years ago and what it costs now, and I, I don't, wouldn't want to pay that. Well, I know we're short for time. I'm just going to race through to show you, there's another great story here. This one is in the annual report. Russell's wasn't, so you got an extra story. But if you, there's a, the um, story of, of Kayla and Brady at the Tiger Family Shelter. They're now in permanent housing. These are one of, kind of the younger folks within, into permanent housing and, and likely will see graduate from that um, with their two kids. Um, so I won't go through their story, but I will just take a moment and uplift, um, what you all have recognized, that it's working here in Washington County. Where we saw a thirty-five percent decline in unsheltered homelessness um, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three. Our next point in time count is actually occurring this week, um, so we'll have updated numbers and all forecasts. I wouldn't be surprised if those numbers go up. Our economic conditions in Oregon are hard. It's really hard for folks to, to stay stable. Um, with, with, with the economy the way it is. So I'll, I'll forecast that and hope I'm wrong, um, and hope that the work we're doing is, is making a difference against those economic forces.
I think that highlighted in the bulletin right there, the unsheltered homelessness has declined by thirty-five point five percent in Washington County, is what our.
Right, region-wide, it's up over forty percent, though.
Yeah, that's the thing, it doesn't feel like down thirty-five percent.
One last good question. It's a history question, because you, you had pit counts going back decades on your website, so. If you're a data person, I am, I went, yeah, it goes, it's in, but there was, I can't remember the years, but like, I want to say ten years ago. We went through a period where we were sheltering a lot of people, and then that declined much more than we're sheltering now. If you go back and look at those pit counts going way, way back, and I'm just wondering, and it may not have been you, it may have been the state, there might have been other things involved. I'm just kind of curious what has happened where we've lost that capacity.
My guess would be um, transitional housing. The, how, federal government used to regularly fund transitional housing. That would be my guess. I, you, Jesse might have more, but.
Kind of as homeless.
Because, yeah, if you're, if you're, but it's, the sheltered numbers were up. So if, if folks are in transitional housing, it's a two-year program. They're still considered homeless. Um, and, and um, we used to have a lot more of it in our community, and um, I'll, I'll make a quick plug. We funded a hundred and nineteen units with um, some of the resources we mentioned. Um, and some of those will be recovery housing, transitional housing, and some of those will be stabilization transitional housing for folks with high mental health needs that are not met in shelters or other places.
Wonder if it had to do with the mental health hospital? That was part of it.
Oh, with the community reinvestment dollars that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's probably right.
Short-term funding.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, it's a perfect song, because we've been taking so many services over the last thirty years.
Well done, ladies. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we are done our word session. We'll uh, in five minutes get started.